It's very fun. I'm Tom, 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 Are you sure? You want to give your mind? You know, I grew up in a small town in Eastern Idaho, and my dad was the first mayor of the town, and I've been to a few meetings like this, and one of the things that's really awesome about Idaho, in small towns Idaho, is the problems that you guys were talking about. How do we get the message out? How do we have a community that wants to be involved? You know, I've been, I've been in big cities, I've lived in LA, I've, I've lived in Moscow, I've been all over, in cities, they don't have the concern about how does the community, how does the city notify the people? Because the people really don't want to know, we barely want to know our neighbors, but when we get into small town Idaho, we have a community, it's a good problem to have, and it's the same kind of solution for that that comes to some of these other issues that we're talking about, pulling together as a community. You talk about, what's the next thing, are people going to go to jail? No, they're not. I've been city attorney for the city of Clarkston for twenty years, I'm the city attorney for Troy and Deary and Peck and Winchester, and what happens is, the next thing that happens is people who don't comply get a ticket, and they're taken into court, and the law moves slowly, and people say, why does it move so slowly? And the problem is, is because every time the law moves, just like every time the government moves, people's rights are at risk, and so we have to be careful that we're doing it right, that we're recognizing rights and trying to get things taken care of. So you guys have some really good problems, and good problems because you have good people, because you have a community that cares, those are good problems to have. There are things, and anytime you have problems with people that care, solutions can come in, we can find them, sometimes it does require police action. Our sheriff's here because every once in a while, we have to call him, and we have to let him to work. What happens on getting the ticket, I'll tell you what happened with Troy and Deary, we had to get a ticket book, because we can't use just a standard ticket from the sheriff, because that puts them then into prosecution of the county, but the city's in charge of that prosecution, so now the city has to make arrangements to get their own ticket books, and once we get the tickets issued, then the city attorney prosecutes them, and that's a process that takes time, because you get somebody arraigned, and then they send it out for another, a few weeks before they can have another hearing, and the first thing that happens is, it's how are we going to resolve the problem? Because when we get in misdemeanor court, we're dealing with problem-solving courts. The misdemeanor court is the time to give it up, people are off-ramp, from going to jail, from trying to keep them from going into felony, so we do things to work with them, try and wedge them back into the straight and narrow, being a good community member, but there's a lot of things that can become, it's a slow process. And so, as I'm standing here, you saw, you saw my face, I've actually been enjoying this, watching this thing happen, you know?
Tom, there's only a problem that can't be solved, and things can't be solved, and for years I haven't seen anything, so I'm only, you know?
Sure. So anyway, I've, I've, I've been living in the Los Flare Valley for about twenty-five years, graduated from U of I College of Law in ninety-eight, before that I was in radio, I was in business, I got my MBA and a law degree, my final state, I was in radio in Eastern Idaho for about fifteen years, I had a part in the national program for a while, a lot of fun, but mom kept telling me I was supposed to go to law school, and, you know, moms have a way of getting with, come on, and so mom pushed me on into law school, and we settled here, and my kids have all graduated, my wife, who, when we first moved up here, she kept saying, why don't I go move back to Utah, now she's saying, I don't feel like you're here. I'm saying, it's a good call, it's a good call. But one question's got to ask you guys.
Do you have any former associations with any attorneys that could present an unconfident interest at any time, such as any pending lawsuits that we have here?
I have a lot of associations with a lot of attorneys, but none of them are going to be involved with any cases against this city. Could there be conflicts? Yes, there always can be, but I don't anticipate it. One of my, one of my associates works for Clark and Feeny, I've heard mention of a few minutes ago, but he was on the case, that's not a conflict, because he never worked for the city of, for the city of Juliette, and so we can, we can have at it, and it just means that he and I know how to work with one another, because we have a friendship, and, believe it or not, attorneys generally get along, even though in court it rarely seems like we do. But yeah, I have a lot of, I have a number of former associates who work around the area, but that would not cause any, any conflicts. I've known Jennifer for so long, you've known her for years, and you can tell you, you can date her, you can tell I'm, Jennifer and I have been friends for years, and I was really honored that she would be willing to suggest that I would be interested in this, because I wasn't interested in it. Any other questions? All right.
I got one. You said the city of Juliette will take the people, the white vans, the junk dirt and stuff, if that way comes up with the tickets, or does the city of Juliette have to take those?
Well, and that, for this city, I can't tell you for sure, but I can tell you, in other cities like Troy and Deary, the city has to come up with the ticket, then we prosecute it in the Weytow County courts, and the city attorney is the prosecutor. I've only been prosecuting for twenty-five years.
How many tickets does it take for them to complete this property?
Well, that, that actually is an interesting question, and I've never seen it happen. No, that's not true.
We might believe.
Well, they get fined, you know, so much, so how much does the fine go up to? Because where I'm living from, if you get up to like four thousand dollars in fines, the city takes it over.
Well, I've only seen one person in twenty-five years lose his property, but that was because when he had, became uninhabitable and was condemned. Other than that, I have read the Juliette ordinance, so I can't tell you what it would take, but typically, it doesn't go up every time, it's just every instance is a new offense that has the same maximum limit, it doesn't ever become a felony, you just start running up one felony, one misdemeanor after another.
Is that, in this, say, in this instance, after that thirty days, then thirty-one, thirty-two, they each want to be a new misdemeanor, which is what the letter says and the law says?
It can, it can, it usually doesn't work quite that way, but it can. Again, I have written the ordinance here, so I can't give you an opinion on that, but I can tell you-
Yeah, but see, there's no incentive to obey that.
Well, there's, there's incentive, sometimes it takes a little while to get people into compliance, but there's incentive. Our police chief here says, yep, he's seen some way of retiring. Retiring. I can, I can tell you that whether it's a big city like Moscow, and it's not that big, but, or a small town like Troy and Deary, it takes a little while to get compliance.
Well, Clark and Feeny got it done immediately, and oh, they, he cleared all the stuff off our acre, let us back on our property.
I'll tell you, Tom Park's a good friend, and he's an excellent attorney, so I acquired it in fact, and he got it done.
So you need to hire a private attorney, that's what I have to do.
Well, any other questions? Thank you very much, you let me come by you.
Thank you very much. We scared you away. So this is also an actual, I don't, we need to make that decision now, or is that maybe a wish?
Because it's a personal decision, you can also go to the executive session and discuss it, and make a decision later.
Yes, we have that longer there. Do a lot of these later.
I'm looking at that.
I can, I- I'm going to make a motion to extend, um, city, for the city attorney's power.
We're only four, we're only twice on the program. I'll let you have this one.
You're going to have that?
I'm going to-
We said yes, you have a party. Is it, do you have one?
Well, there's this, it's, uh-
Do you have more of?
Uh, are you, we have a yard outside. It's up to you.
Thank you.
I've been trying to hide all night. I mean, I guess I'm here, I'm top eight, I've only got four years. Everybody on the, you know, we had back here, head of progress that I've been making over there, as far as getting this light project done, now based on, I guess I'll start out by letting everybody know that I'm active and in part from the JK Baseball Association. This is something that I just kind of took on this way, and decided to try to get this job finished, and, and, that's, that's, that's all of that packet, the goal is forty thousand. As far as raising funds, what do you stand with that? As far as raising funds, that's our goal, we're about twenty-five percent of the way there, and, and I can understand, twenty-five percent, we're about towards right there, getting to that goal. Basically, my approach, kind of there was an ask, whatever way they, whatever way they can, how we're lucky to help us get this thing finally done.
Did I really know where, I saw you never tell that, did I say that?
Jefferson, as far as how much we have?
No, I think you're there with fireplaces.
I have a request to do myself, unless somebody else is requested, but you guys hear this project.
Our next agenda.
Oh, that's right.
There are rumors floating around that they had a big shoot out to Canyon, and that that was done for the lights for this situation, and that there was, most of the money was raised that day for this, is that all just rumors?
Not, not most of the money was raised that day for it.
No, that, that was rumors, and I'd heard from several people, some people didn't know, said that that was what that shoot was for.
That part, to the best of my knowledge, is correct, and there was also another raffle going on through the JK Baseball Association for a rifle, with the raffle on.
So how much money was raised out there from that shoot?
I can't tell you that, I don't have the privilege of that information, because I'm not active for the JK Baseball Association, because all the funds for the lighting project go directly into an account, stewed by the JK Baseball Association. I'm just bringing you this stuff, because this is all stuff that I've helped out of where I solve to try to get this thing done.
That might be something that council wants to find out, look at that account to see if they did make a substantial contribution to it.
That would be something that you have to contact JK Baseball Association about, I don't have access, I'm not on the association anymore, so I don't have access to those accounts, information.
I guess I'd be, so, the shoot that he's talking about raised money from the association, but not for the lights?
As far as I know, the, the money is that we're using for the shoot, that money is donated for the lights.
Okay, so you're raising money for the lights by yourself, and the association is raising money for the lights?
Correct, correct, but all, I mean, the point is that, the house is open, is that all the money, no matter who's raising it, is going directly into a separate account that is stewed by the JK Baseball Association. How, what kind of a process went on with the shoot, and the donating of money from the shoot, or the donating of money from the raffle that they're running and stuff, I have no information on that. Basically, I'm just presenting to you guys what, what we're trying to get accomplished, and no more than just standing here and asking for a signal, it's just a job.
I just, I don't know who I spoke to, that was their Facebook messenger, additions, the ammo country, just made a donation for the lights, that would be who, is the, is the guy, JK?
The president is true with?
Yeah, he's the one that I contacted with that large donation, just to let you know that it's just for my-
That's, that's, that's all, that's why I'm here.
Especially for a little sick monkey, that's great.
That's, that's why I'm here, just to, just to keep this all rolling, and I've contacted a lot of people, a lot of donations, I've got a lot of stuff donated, getting the project done, got the boot trucks donated, raptors used to save the lights, it's donated, and there's three, I have to get the light, uh, one of the, it's going to get donated, uh, the time, one of the electricians, basically, is interested in donating this time completely, another one, it sounds as though the electrical supply wants to buy it for us, but, that's kind of why, if you look at the papers there, the figures there, you'll notice that the lights are thirty-two thousand, the materials are twenty-five, you know, we're asking for forty thousand, there's got to be incidental costs in this, uh, materials and whatnot, and just so the city of Juliette understands that any monies that are made above and beyond the project for the lights, those monies also go over to the right bucket, whatever, whatever that is.
So you're independent, but you are a communication, you're a association with your house?
I am, I was the vice president for years, for seventeen years. Yeah, really, really super long time, but, basically, it's just, like, this way, I just kind of got to the point where the poles are in, the cones are in, the electrical panels are in, we've been sitting on the poles there, in the ground out there for about four years, and it's, it's time for this project to be done, I don't, I don't think I need to explain to the city of Juliette the benefit, but I have this, what it would mean, as far as tournaments being held there, as far as being able, as far as being able to bid for the district tournaments and stuff like that, what it would mean for the, as far as progress this year.
My next one. Um, Molly does, regarding the lights, and she wants to talk about it next month, so...
Molly does, she did.
Right, but she'll talk about it when she's here.
Yes, she said she was going to be gone.
So she just basically said, um, you guys could, if you wanted to decide to donate, we were going to put money on, how much?
Yeah, we just need to find out for, for our budget, how much and all that stuff, for sure.
Right.
So we decide whether or not.
Right, right, right.
She, it, it needed, there was some interest in making a donation with regards to-
The council signs and stuff like that.
Exactly.
Right, so if you're going to, that will have Nick back and Bonnie back, and talking about that on the table for next month?
Okay.
Okay, so the city wins.
Yep.
We can certainly get them for money, thank you.
And also the, take on the June eight.
Oh.
You guys have one under the window, you guys will look for your personal use, maybe anybody here for the June eight?
Make a motion on that.
What, you got to come with me?
Make a motion, table, item number ten, for the case of the motion.
And on the front of the, on the, or the page, there's a QR code, and that QR code, individuals can donate if they want to go through that QR code, or any other list, on the list there.
It goes directly into that account that's set aside for the lights, that QR code that's cool. It bypasses everybody, it bypasses, bypasses me, it just, it just gets money in there for, you know, just people that are individuals that want, that want to make a work, that want to do business, that wants to help, and other, like, to use the QR code, and it'll designate, you know, when you put on, when you make the donation of the QR, this stuff, the donation, so. So this year, see if you can, can you just say that finally, after all these years? I've got a watching night game on that field, before, before I tip over, that's my, that's my goal, so, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
So many lawn numbers, your next one, I don't know. I was just, you have to play a minute, but I'm just, I'm waiting to get some motion to people, huh?
Get out.
Why you guys so happy, bye, bye, say.
Bless the luck. May Denny motion, I said.
All in favor?
That's his job.
Yeah, I know, I was just repeating that.
Okay.
Mr. Weber, I'll put it out.
I gave you the information, right?
Nope.
Yeah, I gave it with you.
Yes, thank you.
You have the copy, everybody have the copy?
No.
Oh, it's Justin's phone.
It's Justin's phone.
I, well, ever since this fire station was built, we've been trying to get Idaho Department of Transportation to put firehouse signs up on the highway, which has been, you know, they, yeah, certainly it's, it's been, but, but anyway, now, we have an opportunity to have lights put in, or put signs in with lights on them, but it's going to cost ten thousand dollars.
These are the lights that flash for the trucks coming in?
When, when, because the speed limit's fifty miles an hour down there.
Right.
It gets a little hairy at times, because people pass, and when I pull out, and there's two cars coming at me, things get a little exciting real fast, so this would be one heck of a safety feature for us, and, well, for anybody on the road, so, I bring it, you know, some of you guys.
Do they face both ways?
There'll be one on this side, and one on the other side.
On the other side.
And we'll have a remote control, we push the button, and we can set it to blink for five minutes, three minutes, whatever, it'll be on a timer.
But Jake, question, how poor is this?
Oh, immensely. It, it's, it gets a little scary down there, I mean, even if you're not in an, you know, in an emergency mode, just pull an on, well, Justin will tell you, you know, pulling on and off there, it gets a little scary at times, because it should be double yellow line all the way through there, they shouldn't be able to pass, but it wouldn't matter anyway, they'd pass anyway, but, it would, it would help us immensely.
Well, that turn is right there, it's-
It, it gets scary at times.
I think they'll find out here, we're in twice, we're in.
Yeah, yeah, there's been a couple runs there.
My motion to get the, do you guys read? My motion to get these lights, the sign, the lights.
I'm guarding it. You're welcome.
Can you say it with the word?
Well.
Just don't blind us, man.
Ride with me once.
I was gonna say, this part's not ready.
As long as I'm driving, we're all right, some people, it's excessive.
Yeah, I think I'm next, let's get this thing going and over, so, I brought up last month the importance, my concern, it must be a violation of some public media laws for use, and one easy way for us to share that, is to order a three-in-one kind of system for adventure, or the table, where we call the table. We need a device with a microphone in it, a microphone that, that has audio recorder, or those, these, are supposed to be audio recording, kept up by all the processes, and with a Bluetooth speaker, so when our city attorney calls in, we all can hear him or her, including folks in the gallery, there's actually a city, excuse me, in Idaho statute saying that all persons who attend a meeting are to hear all words that are said by council. We appreciate what Eric's doing, that we don't get to take credit for that, and you cannot hear two-thirds of what we say on those recordings. And I did some homework, and I contacted our local cities around, we're the only ones that don't have microphones and audio recording systems, and I think I brought up last month that, there's a statute set forth to award, it said that's a simple fine, two hundred fifty dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars, a phone person who willingly participates in making, no recording, doesn't exist. I, I, I don't-
I don't know what this best costs, it doesn't-
Sixty bucks, sixty bucks, less than a hundred dollars. Again, we are the only community within over two hundred miles, and I contacted, or gone on their local video page, who doesn't have equipment that we have now, there's actually a nice little statute that says that if someone's absent, we should be set up toward a quick participation, if you want to.
Adrian, did you send us those statutes?
I brought them on to last month, and I'd be glad to email them on.
Yeah, that's what I need.
Hours of research, I'd be glad to, yeah, absolutely, it's, again, we should be having a microphone.
I've included, I've included seven, first one, first time.
In two oh six, two oh eight?
I don't remember that part of this one.
Yeah, I've got it, actually, absolutely. But we need to, we need to go ahead and get something, we are in violation at times, and I don't, I don't like that, I don't want to be violation, it's a security-
Well, even beside that, it would be nice to have something to call in, and not have to use the police phone or anything.
That's so good.
So I will make a motion to have the proper recording devices in the state council.
One second. I still want to review this.
No, I would just want to send you two times.
Okay, sound reports, I willingly picked out, just about, I think, for tonight, May twenty-eighth, precision concrete, we're here to saw sidewalk ridges, so you guys approved that for last meeting, I sent them the vinyl headings, we'll hear them twenty minutes, and that doesn't mean we still can replace sidewalks, or whatever down the road, this is just to minimize, you know, trip hazards, for now, so, the other thing is, I got the bid from Poe, it's not on the agenda, so you can't take it for tonight, but the bid is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for Howlett, that's the middle section of Howlett, where the buses travel to the school, both other ends of Howlett have already been done, Howlett over by my hearing was repaid, and the other end of Howlett was repaid and chipped, so, it does get a lot of traffic, the other bid is eighteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars, that's Third Street, below Water Street, all the way down the railroad, so it's eighteen thousand two hundred fifty, this bid also has a six thousand dollar CAFD authentically, except both of those, they'll give us another six thousand dollar discount, so total, the total payment right now is thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty, plus fifty-two thousand five hundred fifty, and minus what's in the budget for maybe, so, there may be some hard money that's required to finish out, but I won't use all of it, and that means plenty for people to donate, the lights, plenty for the signs, plenty for sidewalks, and, you know, the summer home, and some new sidewalks, so, um, yeah, I'll have to, I'll bring, I'll have this on the agenda next month, if Poe is coming out before the next meeting, I may have to have one of the special meetings to have this, but hopefully, I mean, they usually come out August and September, everything, because you should wait out for some reason. Oh, I forgot the most important thing, Joe, will you stand, please? Joe is our new city employee, and he's going to do an amazing job, some of you may have not known Joe, but Joe dodged a knee a couple years ago, and he is saving us money left and right, he's already fixed two pumps that I threw in the garbage, makes me look bad, but it was frozen and cracked, but he welded it back together, and wanted to help get, put it all back together and works, and he's keeping the water clock green this summer, but he's got new sprinklers down there, and, and I'll let him talk, if he wants to talk about anything, you know? Okay, so he fixed my weed eater, he's fixed my riding lawnmower, he's fixing everything, so it's been awesome.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Good job.
You asked for lawn mowers.
So, um, the new city lawnmower, so we-
He fixed my fire灰.
The company sold that sells this lawnmower, they find, they're just now, they have lawnmowers, so with Tom's lawnmower, here.
Two pillars, I'm gonna put a thing to the back.
So, we'll get, we'll get it back, so we're gonna put two pillars in front of this, I can't do that.
Joe, should you air it? No, I don't.
Um, I'd like to have a mention of raising this, um, the discussion, with the action agent, of expanding hours in the city hall, after the tours, I'll just say, I don't want to make a complaint, but contact- I'll just say, I don't want to complain for contacts or others, so helping to be, if they can, in that, and a lot of, or a few of them, send them these as well. We just have to really bizarre hours, so possibly expand the engagement. Show us the people, Julie.
Just wanna say thank you to everyone waiting on the discussion in the community about using our public streets and our walking trail as a racetrack. I love it, and it's, that's a great ongoing discussion. Don't forget, these guys are a force for us, so thank you, man.